A board order, a four-day for March 20th, 2025. Everybody's came to touch?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ansler?
Here.
Mr. Dattler?
Here.
Mrs. Gettrich? Here. Mr. Mowry?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Mr. Dolan? Here. Ms. Opa-Bor? Here. Mr. Prince?
Here.
And Ms. Stocker? Here. Dr. Blessing? Mr. Lee, present, Mr. Homan?
Here.
Alrighty, on to the opening items here. Do I have a motion to approve item C through G? So moved. First by Jason?
I seconded.
First by Anne? Okay, we'll start back at the top here. So, adoption of agenda, typical business as usual, waiting in the reading of minutes. We had two board meetings to approve. One regular board meeting, we had a work session to go over the winter updates of Naola. Approval of minutes, I need, then we are to item G, which would be recognition of citizens, staff, and students. Mister, did I skip one? Oh, I was gonna say, Mr. Ansler?
Yes, sir.
That's you?
Mylisburg, does he like to come up? The Mylisburg Schools February District Student of the Month is Maddox Lane preschool student, Archer Dean. Archer was nominated by his teacher, Becky Anderson. She said Archer was chosen as Student of the Month because he exhibits positive PPIs, expectations to be kind, be strong, and be well while at school. Archer has grown so much in the few years he's at Maddox Lane. Archer is a friend to all of his classmates, and he is eager to help younger peers engage and play at school. He works hard with his teachers and his therapists to make sure that he is doing his best. Archer exhibits a positive attitude and is a great helper during class time. He demonstrates creativity and a great student. So congratulations to Mr. Archer.
Archer, we have a Student of the Month medallion for you, and we have a cool T-shirt. Look at that. Would you like to go get your picture taken over by the Viking? Would you like to do that? Do you wanna wear, you wanna wear your Viking? You wanna wear the helmet?
Yeah.
You wanna put that on? Somebody put that on? Come on, where's your picture?
Oh, oh.
There we go. Let's try again. Ready? There we go.
You did awesome.
Bring your other student.
It's starting to get better with him.
You're gonna bring all your family with you. Get a picture. You wanna hold on to the hat? Right now, turn around carefully.
What's up?
Do you wanna give everybody a high five over at the table? Do that. Oh, good job. Give her a high five. Here we go. Alright. Archer, all the questions. High five. Keep going. You gotta keep going. These are the big kids. Give them a high five too.
Nice, Roddy. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing all your family, and thank you all for sharing Archer with us. You've been a great evening.
Roll call, please? Yes.
Oh, you gotta get each.
We already did it.
Mrs. Gettrich?
Yes.
Mr. Mowry?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Next is public comments. We have two green sheets. Each person who wishes to address the board shall complete the form prior to beginning of the meeting. Commenters will give his or her name, address, and address each person allotted. Is allotted three minutes to speak. The first fifteen minutes of public participation will be allotted for public comments concerning agenda items. An additional fifteen minutes will, for discussion of other topics, will be provided. A total of thirty minutes for public comments. We will give a thirty-second warning so speakers know when their three minutes is up. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole, consistent with our policies. This is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. As a reminder, our expectations tonight is that everyone conducts themselves civilly and respectfully. Please do not poll, we do not tolerate profanity, frivolous, repetitive, or harassing statements. First, we have David. I would hate to butcher your last name.
Shroless.
Shroless. Three minutes, sir.
Good. Right here? Yes, sir. Alright, hello, everybody. I just wanted to come and advocate for Ed Choice in that it...
David.
Oh, David Shroless.
Put the microphone.
Check one, two.
Yeah, that's it.
David Shroless, 108 South Main Street, Mylisburg, Ohio. I just wanna come and advocate for Ed Choice in that it inspires competition. And that is one thing that education direly needs. And that competition makes you better. You should embrace it. Across all themes, anything that exists without competition degrades. And so, to fight that degradation, we need to embrace it and use it to improve ourself. That's basically the gist of the message. Using our tax money to fight it, I do not like that. The biggest reason is, if you've looked into the case that's going up against it, it's not that great, and it's pretty much doomed for failure. It would be throwing money away. We need to use that money instead to improve our school and our competitiveness. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, we have Scott Taylor.
Good evening. So my name's Scott Taylor, and I live at 10110 Mylisburg Spring Grove Pike. The reason why I came this evening is that there's been some conversation about what the definition of DEI is, and I wanted to comment on what the Department of Education states it to actually being a bulletin they sent out recently. For years, parents have been begging schools to focus on teaching their kids practical skills like reading, writing, and math, instead of pushing critical theory, rote sex education, and diverse ideologies, but their concerns have been brushed off, mocked, or shut down entirely. Parents Now is a time that you share these recipes of betrayal that has happened in our public schools, and this webpage demonstrates that President Trump's Department of Education is putting power back into the hands of parents. Now, the reason why I bring this up is I know that in the past, I've observed that Mylisburg had some issues with this. I know in 2022, the Mylisburg School Board voted to spend $40,000 on a program entitled Equity Fellows. That's an example of this kind of betrayal. The program, which really claimed to be focused on better student outcomes, was indoctrination of critical theory and divisive ideologies, and I personally read all 370 slides of that program. Not only that, the board voted to send the superintendent to a conference entitled Voice for Equity that promoted these same ideologies. And just another example of some of these issues that actually did happen in our district. The reason why I'm really coming here is that I'd like to know for certain that this direction has changed, and it would be great if the, if the board would have a resolution to say that this is no longer something that this particular district will engage with. And all this research that I have is fully documented, available if anyone wants to really read it, and I have a handout that has a QR code on it that actually points to it. But I, I really just wanna make sure we don't have this in our school district, and we focus on the key elements of writing, math, instead of divisive things like that. And that's the message I brought today. So I thank you for your time.
I guess you scrub?
Yes. If you wanna, I just can pass these on so you know what it was.
Next, we got item number four, adoption and revision of board policy. It is recommended that the Board of Education present the first reading of the Naola Board Policy 43.2 when our update to include the following policies presented. That was our work session that we had earlier this week. We will approve this the next board meeting at the second reading. Next is board discussion, and we have a lovely presentation that the student representatives are going to present to us.
So, thank you guys for allowing us to give this presentation. This presentation goes over our second and third quarter findings. We finally made it to all of the elementary schools, and we are very excited to share it with you.
Alright, so for our visits down to the elementary schools these past two quarters, we wanted to get more insight on the students and how they felt about their education. So we used a new method. Previously, in the first quarter, we used a four corners method. So we asked a question, and then we had four different options, and then the kids went to like that side of the room. That took a lot of time. It was great, but we decided to do a different approach this time. So we did a more station activity. So each question was its own station. We had four separate questions. The kids would come in, go to one, go to question one, then question two, three, and four, and then like circle, and then walk back out and line back up. This method was a lot quicker, got the kids in a lot faster, in and out a lot faster, and back to class, and we were able to have two different sessions going at the same time. So in most schools, we had one running in the library and then one running in the gym. So it got the kids through a lot faster, and we got done a lot faster as well. It made it more personal because we were able to have one-on-one conversations with the kids. They weren't very long, they were very short and quick as they were moving through, but we still got more personal information back from the kids, and it minimized skewed results. So the kids had like the privacy when they're answering their question, their friends or like their peers couldn't see how they were answering the question, so it didn't influence their response. So, yeah.
Kind of just before we go into the results, we just wanted to share a common problem that arose when we started conducting the survey, and that was that a lot of the younger students, so the K-22 students, did not fully understand or comprehend the questions we were asking. So in some cases, we did, in that moment, alter the question so that it became more understandable to them. So moving into the first question, we asked, "My teacher encourages me to do my best." This was considered an easier question. We had not too many outliers with this. In some cases, we did change the word encourages to one, and this is just based on the trends we saw with the kindergarteners in second grade, first and second graders. Out of the thirteen, uh, not thirteen, 1,003 to 39 students that we surveyed with this question, 1,009 said they almost always feel encouraged to do their best from their teachers. 316 students said sometimes, and then we have 14 students say never.
Our next question that we ask is, "My teacher believes that I can learn." Again, with what Andrew said about some of the students not understanding, we did have to change some of the wording to "my teacher thinks I can learn" for a couple of the students, especially the kindergarteners, but this had the most positive results for almost always. So about 1,077 students thought almost always their teacher thinks they can learn. Sometimes was 249, and then never was 13. So I think that was pretty positive.
And then for our third question, we asked the kids, "My teacher helps me understand why what we are learning is important." So this is definitely the most difficult question to get across to the kids. For our fourth and fifth graders, this wasn't as much of a problem, but definitely with like our littles, our kindergarteners, first graders, we had to tweak the question a little bit. Sometimes, like, we had to give them an example, like, if you guys are learning something new in class, does your teacher explain that that's important for you guys to know? Or someone said, "If you're learning math, you know why you're learning math." So giving them like more tangible examples so the kids could get a grasp on the statement. And I feel for that reason, this one had the largest percentage of never, with 4% and 51 students answering never on that. And then 861 students answered almost always, and 350 students answered sometimes on this question. So it was our most negative response, but overall, it was still generally positive.
And then with our last question, it was, "My teacher helps me when I don't understand something." This one had the highest percentage of sometimes. A lot of the students, and I think this goes for all of the questions, if, if they said never, we tried to ask them, "Okay, why never?" And we just kind of talked through it with them, and a lot of them did change to sometimes once you've really explained to them what we mean and what we're looking for in their answer. We had always with 66.1%, which was about 884 students. Sometimes was the highest, with 31%, which was 423 students, and then our never was 2.4% with 32 students.
So our takeaways from this is that, out of all of these questions, the results for almost always were always over 70%. Question three did have the biggest percentage of never, like Asosa said, and then question four had the biggest percent of sometimes. But overall, question two and question one were the most positive results, with both of the almost always being over 75%, which I think is very good for our district.
And then a couple more takeaways that we had. We changed, or one of the main things that we changed was the format of our presentation. Instead of doing it by grade, we did it just by question. So these numbers encompass all the students in the district per question. And another takeaway that I'm super excited about, and I know sadly, Asosa and I won't be here too much longer, but we have made steps to getting these surveys to the middle schools. We're very excited to meet with and have breakfast with the middle school student council coming up, so that for me is probably the biggest takeaway and one of the things I'm most excited to do.
Alright, any questions or comments?
I was just wondering, you can share the information with the building principals so they can share it with the teachers?
Yes.
Thank you. Well done, yes. Good job. Good job.
Alright, you're not back until the fall, back in the schools until the fall, and you're gonna do this again in the fall.
I'm actually, we plan on going to those four original schools we questionnaired in the fall of last year, which was three intermediate schools in Bauer, just to kind of follow up on what they think about the Great Dating after they've gone through a year of school. So, yeah, those are our plans, those are our plans for the elementary schools, and then, like I said, we do plan on going back to the middle school to survey them as well.
To give the question that I was thinking as you were going through, and you were asking those questions, it would be interesting to see, a question of what do kids look forward the most to when they come to school? Whether that be seeing a teacher, seeing their friends, feeling safe. We've got kids from all economic backgrounds, demographics. It would be interesting to see not only at the elementary, but at the intermediate, junior high, even, it would be interesting to see how that has changed from as they progress through school. What drives them, what, what do they look forward to? Is it a certain class? Is it a certain teacher? Is it seeing their peers? Knowing that some kids, just because of backgrounds and everything else, they may feel more safe, they have a counselor that they can reach out to. I think what you guys do has been remarkable. I think we have learned just as much from you guys in your presentations and what you guys have brought to us over the couple of years that you guys have been here, as much as you get from us. But that was just a question that you were going through. I'm like, what is driving these kids? What do they look forward to the most? I don't know if that's a right question, but I think it would be, it would be interesting to find out what, what they look forward to the most when they come to school. But I think you guys do an outstanding job, so congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, I just thanks for all that you do to come up with the presentation, all the work that goes behind that, and, you know, coming to the board meetings, going to the roundtable on Saturdays. I don't think anyone knows, like all of us know, how much you put into it, and we appreciate it. And right now, they're interviewing two new student reps for next year, so they're busy doing that as well. With their busy schedules, it's a lie, and we appreciate you.
Alrighty, on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items A through I? Uh, some of...
Second.
First by Chris Ansler, second by Nyla, Gettrich? Okay, item A, business as usual, looks like a couple student and a teacher going, going somewhere for something.
Yes, that's the business professionals.
DEA?
Yes, and that competition is in Orlando, Florida. So, that's exciting that she qualified for that.
That's awesome.
Nationals, yes. And then, of course, item B is the out-of-state field trip overnight for our Washington DC. This is the approval of the chaperones that are going on that trip. Item C is our mini grants. So this is where we're asking the board to approve a contribution of $2,500 for the, 75, sorry, not 25. My contacts are a little waning at this point in the night. $7,500, excuse me, and then our education foundation also donated $7,500. So that's $15,000 for our teacher mini grants, which is wonderful. And then item D and E, Mr. Black submitted those student names for approval for early graduation for the class of 2025, finishing up some, some credits. And then F is an MOU, which is very exciting, Molly. The MVCTC, which is the board that she serves on as well. We are entering into an MOU for a technology teacher from the MVCTC as a satellite program, and this is a wonderful opportunity for our students to get all of the curriculum and materials and train staff, and then it saves our district money. So it's a great partnership because we don't have to hire that teacher because the MVCTC hires that teacher and all of the benefits and supplies that go along with it. So it's wonderful, and our students get those wonderful classes and credentials. And then item G, we have a new student club at the high school. I think this makes 11 now, right? We were just talking about that earlier with the students. So this is a career exploration course focused on medical opportunities, which I know Molly can attest, there's a lot of medical careers, opportunities at the MVCTC, and Nyla knows that as well personally, that it's a great way, again, for our students to pursue different careers and learn about them. So we're excited to have that added. And then we do have a tuition-free senior per the board policy, so that is on there as well. And then also, as part of our policy update, approval of the special education model policy resolution. Again, these are just updates from the legislation and also our policies regarding special education, and it's just part of our Naola policy to make sure that we are up to date in compliance with all of our special ed policies and procedures. And I think that's it. If there's any questions?
No, our mini grant presentation will be in May. We'll start that at 5:00, 4:30?
They're usually ready about 5:15. We have 19 applicants for the mini round.
Nineteen?
That's great.
For the mini round.
And then, remember, if I serve you correctly, when I first got on the board, we had 2,000?
You guys, each board did 5,000, and then it grew to 10,000 in grants?
But I think, I mean, I think it was 12. I think we started less than that.
And it could have been less than that before I took over.
Oh, that's right.
I like 10,000.
Anybody else? Roll call?
Mrs. Gettrich? Yes. Mr. Mowry?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Mr. Dattler?
Oh, that's the same. Alright, consent agenda, part two. Two items here broke out separately. Resolution to file complaint against the valuation of real estate property. It is recommend, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file a complaint against the valuation of real estate property for tax year 2024 due to the incorrect total valuation or assessment of owner CEO Bob, 44, Full Company LLC.
That is redrifting.
This is redrifting?
Just so you're putting it with a piece of property.
Do I have a motion? Some move?
Second.
Any questions?
I have questions. Last year, we voted to approve, here, turn it off. We voted to approve legal to pursue seven businesses. And my concern was, you know, whenever you engage attorneys seven different ways, it gets expensive. How can we determine what our net gain is? Because if these businesses have a bona fide appraisal that they're challenging their property value with, we could very well be spending good money for bad if our net gain is nil.
Right, so this is where we determine how much of revenue is actually gonna be affected if we do or don't assess this property. So for this specific property, it's over $20,000 of revenue to the district. So we're not gonna spin anywhere near that illegal to get the paperwork filed to go against this valuation of this property. And then, I don't wanna speak to the next one, but I'll, when we get to that one, I will. But it's the same concept. So what I do when I handle these is, we're looking at businesses that are in excess of $500,000 above, so there are rules on which properties you can and can't get. So there are rules on which properties you can and can't get to or file against. And so the difference of the valuation has to be over that amount. You're going to go, you know, you're not going to work with your local taxpayers and your small businesses and your residential properties for this year. These are the large corporate properties that are in your communities, generating the tax dollars for you. And you're going to want to try to keep that revenue and compound that revenue for future years. So that's why the properties that I choose to work with are typically falling under those categories and those benefits are there.
So 225 wrote this, Bob Adams in it?
No, it should be red roofing, 222.
222. Okay. All right, so, so back, so how are these properties defined for you? Do you go out and see them or does somebody give?
We have a board of revisions. Every district has a board of revisions team. They will monitor these for us. That's just something your treasurer does not have the capacity to monitor every single property value change that's happening in your district. And so they, they watch the county, they monitor, they notify us, and then we take what's in our best interest for our districts on whether we pursue them or not.
Okay, so is it possible to define with a look back at a future board meeting in 2024, what we spent to pursue versus what we gained? That's really what I'm looking for. I, I'm not necessarily, I get as advocating for our revenue.
Right.
But if, but you know, understanding these processes and going through them, if the property owner is properly prepared to go through that revenue hearing with an appraisal, it's difficult to justify keeping the property value high and oftentimes it goes lower. So if we're spending substantial legal fees to pursue money, that nets us no money, I'm concerned that we could be wasting money. Does that make sense?
It makes total sense. So what you have to think of is if we pursue this for this property, it's going to be a compound of years of keeping that value and we're going to continue to make that revenue for years to come. So if we spend, and this is not a number of, this is just an example. Say you spend $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 in the paperwork and legal fees and getting something filed, and then you're making 20 grand in revenue each year, compounding over the future years at that same pace, you're not out.
If we, if we are, pencils.
And so what happens?
Right, so that justification is what I'm.
That is what I'm going for. I wouldn't pursue something if I didn't think that that was, so that's, that's what I base it off of. So I'm on the same level as you. And what we fight these with is we look at the recent sales. And so what I can tell you with that is that property was sold for 2.4 million. So that recent sale is on my favor. That recent sale is going to show, it's going to show the value of that property. So that's my argument. And so we're going to use that to back that up. And then, you know, that's a property, when I, when I did my research on that property, that's a property owned by someone that's not a local taxpayer, that's a large corporation. They actually purchased it and then leased it back. So there's, that's the Wolf and Hill Grove, there's another one. So we're, I'm trying to do the things that don't affect our people.
I completely understand, but after just going through that myself, recent sales don't mean anything unfortunately, because I tried to use the same thing and they told me it's invalid unless you have an appraisal to break them. I even had a reel or a good with me, so.
Don't come with them, don't come with them.
It's complicated at the county level. So I just want to make sure we're spending good money and that the net income is a positive.
Correct. Correct, I agree. And that's my goal here. But I can get for you what the board of revisions attorney fees were during the last seven that were given to you last year versus what you brought back in reference.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted, just for reference, it was consent, it did the two, 21-24.
What was the date? Was it also in this month?
Uh, I think it was March of 2024, yeah. Just seemed like a lot. You know, anytime you engage law firms to pursue that many people, it's expensive. So I just want to make sure it's penciling and netting us positive income.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Roll call?
Mr. Mallory?
We're going to talk about the.
All right, that's a separate vote, so we got a motion into that.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
All right, item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following resolution to file complaint against valuation of real estate property for tax year 2024 due to an incorrect total valuation or assessment of the owner Wolf and Hill Grove LLC. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
First by Nyla?
I second it.
Second by Ann.
All right, let me speak to this one here just a little bit. So this one's revenue per year is actually 71,000. So there's, there's a lot of revenue at stake here with this property. This is the property that I was referencing a few minutes ago that was sold and leased back to a company that functions here in Miami'sburg. That, that last sale was 6.1 million. So this is an excessive amount that we're going to want to pursue.
Any questions?
Are you referring to LGB Structural Engineers?
Correct. Designers.
So they purchased the property for 6.6 million on a $1.2 million valuation?
LGB sold the property to Wolf and Hill Grove and Hill Grove leased that building back to LGB.
Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes. On to human resource items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Do I have a motion?
So approved.
Second.
Business as usual here. Certified personnel report. Anything to speak to here? Roll call?
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Here we are. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. This is item B. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the following, the following personnel classified reports.
Second.
First by Ann, second by Chris. Roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
And Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Item C, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports, supplemental, stipend, certificated and classified. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
First by Jason?
Second.
Second by Nyla? Roll call?
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Next, we have agreements and contracts. Do I have a motion to approve items? Says A through D, but I think that is incorrect. A, D.
It is.
Oh, there is, approve items A through D. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
First by Chris, second by Nyla. Back to the top, item A.
That's me. That's WeVikes, that's one of our annual, all of the contracts are getting into our annual renewals, especially as we move toward the end of our fiscal year. We try to cut off all of our contracts and invoices in May. So yeah, WeVikes is something we've, it's an annual event that's been going on quite a long time.
Yeah, this one will be a. This one will be a new three-year contract with them. And that's the use of Harmon Field, they, we've been, they've been a great organization to work with and we, we charge a nominal fee to keep it running and they, they help us out with the field up there. It's a great partnership to continue the flow into our, our programs here in the district. So we always try to work and make some things out with them, so.
Is Sedgwick the consortium that you use? Or is that that you were explaining to me when we toured the facilities that you, the buying group that you?
Yep, Sedgwick, or the one down the list, Sedgwick, that's going to be for our workers' compensation.
Okay.
And then unemployment. And so they are part of a consortium.
What's the consortium for facilities maintenance that you use, just so I can come into memory?
For facilities maintenance?
We were looking at boilers and you said you got a great deal from?
Oh, when we, when we go, those are different ones I call tips. So for example, like the fuel tanks of transportation, we belong to a tips consortium.
That one, okay.
Yeah, so there's, we try to join, they don't cost us money to join, and then we kind of get the best bang for the buck.
Harder than bidding, because these, these PDFs don't often disclose what they are. So I just, thanks, appreciate it.
Can we just go back to the WeVikes? I just want to make a comment that what a nice facility to be able to kind of show off to other communities when they come and have games at Harmon. You know, yes, we're not using it for our high school, but it's still a nice facility and it's great that we can host other cities, WeVikeses or We, whatever they are, teams. So I'm glad we have that.
Seven, seven and eight group, the both teams still play there as well.
Yeah, it's a very active field still, so.
Yeah, we have a lot of fun.
A nice partnership with WeVikes. They really help us out, take really good conditions of that field up there. So it's, it's a nice, it's a really good partnership for everyone.
Item B, Meta Solutions.
This is our internet provider, all of our technology, all of our servers, all of our data reporting. It's kind of a pretty big contract, but it encompasses a lot of services. I mean, Stacy can talk in depth if anyone has specific questions for the Meta contract. It's an ITC, there are several options within the state and we need service through Meta.
The impact group?
This is just our communications contract instead of hiring a public relations officer. We can just utilize a service so that we don't have to pay salary benefits and it's on a yearly basis. And they did not raise any of their costs this year, so. It helps service our internet, I mean, our internet, our website, our app, all of our social media, any written communications.
Roll call?
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Next, we will move to the financial agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve items A through D?
I move to approve items A through D.
Second. First by Ann, second by Jason. Ms. Katrina?
All right, so item A is for the authorization for amendment to the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources, which are procedural and monthly done here. The resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authors, the necessary tax levies for tax year 25, 26. This is what comes from the county auditor and so we have to accept those typically done this time of year, every year. Item C is approval of then and nows, there are two Trotlet Madison High School invoices in there that will need approved. Item D is the approval of purchase orders. This purchase order has succeeded the board approved amount of 25,000. It is for Forward Edge and it is for 38,000. And then item E is just the approval.
Any questions? Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Next, our favorite part, acceptance of donations. Do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second.
First by Chris, second by Nyla. We have 800 from Dayton Foundation Grants, Randall and Mary Nesis and Ed Nessus, and Ed Taylor Jr. to be used for K2 science through the curriculum department. 1,862,25 from the Mount, from the Mount Intermediate School PTA to the Mount Intermediate School Library for the book fair. 2,488 from Mark Twain Primary School PDA to the Mark Twain Primary School Library for the book fair. Gracious donation of 11,000 from the Myersburg Eagles to quite a few sports there. Basketball, band, choir, destination imagination, academic club, colored guard, softball, wrestling, lacrosse and baseball. Thank you for all those generous donations. Roll call?
Mr. Ainsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mrs. Gettr?
Yes.
Mr. Mallory?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
All right, we are on the reports. Ms. Molly?
Hi there. So Miami Valley is still jamming and doing great. They have right now, just earned the district five-star rating from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce again for another year in a row. Their beginning balance for the beginning of the month was 49,415,560. It's dwindling because of the sand in the year and a lot of kids are going on school trips and programs and things like that. But it's been an exciting year for them. They are having their National Honor Society ceremony this Saturday, or Saturday the 23rd at 2:00 PM. If anybody would like to attend, it is in the school. And there are 125 students that are going to be tapped and brought into National Honor Society that weekend. The FFA is a huge program at Miami Valley CTC and they will be having their annual banquet on April the 24th at 6:00. And I have that letter with me if anybody's interested in taking a look at it. It's, it's a really amazing night to see what these kids are doing and learning with the future farmers. So it's a great evening for those. Prom is April the 5th and they have between 815,000 students that attend their prom. So I'm not chaperoning. The theme is midnight in Manhattan, so it should be really fun. There was a presentation at the last board meeting and it was by four of the Career Connections Programs. There are only 55 students, sophomores in the building that are in this program and they were talking about how much they're learning and how much they're doing. And the students were actually begging the school to please make this program bigger. I don't know whether they're going to call them, but the school's like, with this feedback, we're going to have to look at that. Because what they do is it is a combination of in-class learning, they have three in-class programs, and then they have four online school classrooms that they sit and do their online work, but they have help available there for them. And several of the students are like, I'm already moving into my junior year studies because I'm doing so well in this program. They're, they're all thriving at this and they were not thriving in the traditional aspects. So this is something really interesting to watch and see how that grows. The other thing that Dr. Blessing had already touched on is that CTC is adding three new programs next year and Miami'sburg got two of them. So I'm just so excited for us. Yay, we're going to keep going. So the middle school project is called Project Lead the Way and it's also career exploration. And then the high school is the information technology and computer sciences. So great for us and great that our kids can be here and tap into those resources and really learn while not missing anything in their home school. So this is kind of a side note, they are constructing what's called a career closet. So if you have kids that are going out for job interviews and they, that they don't have the clothing appropriate for that, they are going to have those facilities there at the school for them to come and not really shop, but because it's all free, but they can come and pick something appropriate. They are also going to have what's called a care closet in the same space. So if they're having struggles and they need just clean, regular, everyday clothes, shoes, hygiene products, things like that, those will be available for them. It is also in a kind of private part of the school building and there are showers and there's counseling and things available. So it's kind of a good place for kids to go if they need help in any way, shape or form. They are just now starting to build this room, so I'm going to be helping out with that and the layout and the, and the project itself and how it should look and make the kids comfortable. If you do have any clothing, if you're cleaning out because it's spring and you have something you feel would be appropriate, I would be happy to take it up for you. They do have a retired teachers program that are going to be doing volunteer hours to wash the clothes and iron them and prep them and make sure that they are dressed appropriately and things like that. So they do have some outside volunteer help to do this. But I thought it was just such a great program and idea and who knows, maybe that'll spread to some other schools. So if you have any questions, you can see me. So if you have any questions, you can see me after too. That is pretty much it for the, they're starting to wind things down. Any questions?
Can I add something to Molly's report? Today was acceptance day for our students. We had 107 incoming juniors and a few seniors going to the senior program, applied to the CTC and we had over 70 accepted. And we have quite a few still on the waitlist.
That's a really good percentage, that's amazing.
Awesome.
You know, just a quick comment, me and my wife are in a hair salon. Obviously that's not my Valley way because it's my wife's. But we had a couple of students that interned to get their hours and you are saving their families tens of thousands of dollars. Having to go to cosmetology school after they get out of high school. And you're setting those kids up to make really good six-figure incomes if they're hard workers. And I think that's just awesome because it's really cool for the kids. The internship process was seamless. It was a Wes Carrollton student that interned, but it was, it was really cool. And I learned quite a bit about it and pretty deep, so good work.
Anything else?
I think it's really cool that the CTC has that with professional clothing for internships and interviews and stuff. Because the only, the only other time I've heard about stuff like that is when I've like been on college visits and like our tour guides would be like, yeah, like this college has like this and this and like it's super cool. And like, that's like a bragging point for a lot of like universities. So I think it's really cool that the CTC has that for their students as well.
I love that they're supporting them in all ways and trying to get them ready for real-life situations. Their goal is for them to get out and be able to support themselves and have a job and keep going. So it is very exciting.
Thank you, Molly. Mr. Mowry?
Thank you, Mr. Dapler. First, before I get started, something I kind of wanted to bring up to the board as a whole. Something that I struggle with in our meetings is, you know, in our agendas, and this really isn't part of the legislative, but for instance, this evening, there are 55 PDF attachments within this. And, you know, I'm constantly fishing through my phone, trying to look at what I'm voting for before I vote for it. Would it be possible to have Regina condense all the attachments in a chronological order to a PDF that we can look at on the screen so that I don't have to be fishing through my phone or is that, is that hard to do?
We can open them now, right?
No, I don't need to open them now. I'm just talking about in the future. I mean, I didn't manage it, but I'm constantly going to board docs and trying to open them. And I know these guys do the same thing with their laptops. Is it possible to do that just to eliminate the phone distraction? Or no?
We can always.
Try it. You didn't have to merge?
Well, we merged them before, but I think because we just had the work session Tuesday, they downloaded into this upper PDFs.
Well, in our agenda, they're always separate.
Well, they have to remain, for purposes, they have to remain with each, each attachment has to be attached to its item.
What I did want to ask for is them printed out. Because it's too much, right? I get it, right? And it would be a hassle. But if there's a way that, you know, one of these monitors could be, you know, what we're voting on so that we could, right, you know, so that we could look at it each time so that we don't have to look back and forth. It would be, in the future, just something to work towards because there's a lot of information.
Would it be helpful, right, to, in the future, we back here?
That would be great. That would be perfect.
And now some of them, some of them might be hard to see or some of them might be quite lengthy. Sorry, I'm not as experienced.
Well, now that Mr. Dapler moves our meetings at light speed. And if I would, and if I would be, why, I'm messing up, I'm messing up this one-hour plan. We could, we could move on.
I can pull them up. Would this be helpful?
March 5. Not this meeting, but in the future, yes. And we can work through it. I just, it's kind of distracting to have to always be on your phone trying to open these PDFs and look at. Anyway, federally and state level, legislation's been boring. Not at all, there's a lot happening. I did speak, you know, the state legislation, Nyla mentioned to me a bill for reduced school lunches. What did you call that?
Yeah.
What else was it?
I don't, yeah, I asked if you knew that Peter heard about it.
I hadn't, but if you would send me that, I'd be happy to research it for you. The report that I got back from State Representative Young this afternoon said that the majority of the state legislative efforts are focused on secondary education, college right now. But there are several bills that are in the process of working their way through the Senate and the House. The first that he mentioned was a bill similar to House Bill 153 that has widespread preliminary support in the House of Representatives and the initial bill came out of the Senate. So there's no reason to think that it wasn't there as well. That will require school board members to designate their party affiliation when running for office, which I could have impacts in an election year. State Representative Beth Lear and Representative Josh Williams are crafting a bill to replicate Senate Bill 1 in regards to DEI training and indoctrination limitations in K to 12 schooling. Senate has a companion, the Senate has a companion bill, Senate Bill 113, that is currently in the House. And State Representative Adam Burd and Representative Josh Williams are crafting a bill to extend the school year. And I put a question mark by that one and I'm going to follow up on that one and have a lot more to report of why, what the purpose is, and just sort of understand where that's going. Today is kind of some significant news. President Trump signed an executive order to close the Department of Education and take the current functions. It was new, it just happened at like 4:30, so I haven't had a lot of time to read it, but I printed it. That the current functions of the Department of Education that manage special needs care of kids and those would be transferred to other current departments when the department closes. I know Governor Dewine was in Washington today when he signed it and I'll be tracking this a lot closer, I'm sure everybody will, because this has, you know, who knows what impacts it'll have. But how much do we receive from the Fed each year in revenue? Good for him. Nine million or 11 million?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I mean, we, these are focused on Title I and IDEA funds and we just determined this number the other day.
We have a lot, we have almost $2 million in salaries in Title I and IDEA.
Two million?
Almost.
So as a lot of employees says.
It is, but my understanding is that it doesn't necessarily mean that the cutting off of funds is going to occur.
I think they're trying to transfer it and figure out how to do it to where the revenue stream doesn't get interrupted in the process.
Correct.
But I'm sure there will be some pains through there.
There will be.
Yeah, guaranteed. So anyway, that is something to look forward to. That's really all I have tonight as far as the list. Oh, one other thing I did have. Governor Dewine said with the authority for education being projected more and more to the states, he did release on his Twitter account the other day that he plans to incorporate several subjects back into the curriculum of Ohio schools, which are to embed social studies content directly into all the ELA materials used to teach reading and writing skills. Require instruction on Ohio history in every grade beginning in kindergarten. Emphasize the development of essential practical life skills. Integrate career planning into existing high school graduation plans, which I think we already do a really good job at that, but there might be some one things there. The one that kind of caught my eye because it was a real hassle for our household was put drivers in back into high schools. So that might be an interesting thing to re-implement, but I know during the COVID years, it was hard to get into a driver's school. So to have that be back would be a benefit to our community for sure. So thanks.
Mr. Mowry, I can go back, but to Miami was just IDEA. When you take in IDEA and Title and we're only talking salaries, it's over 3.3 million.
3.3 million.
And salary, not including. I've taken IDEA.
So I round numbered it, impacts of 250 employees or more.
And so, and there's other costs that are in those grants as well, but it's mostly salaries. Most of those grants are over 3 million.
As far, as far as tracking the cost impacts of these changes, how, just kind of take it as it comes and do the best you can. It's going to, it seems like everything is such a moving target. It's really hard for me to understand and you guys are professionals at it.
It's so unknown, I don't know how you guess that. I mean, we just have to follow closely and see how the funding changes. I don't firmly believe the funding is going to be cut, I just think it's going to be changed the way that it's arranged to us.
It's unknown.
It's unknown and I can't count it out as it's continuing to flow.
Each house likes to depend on where their money's coming from and plan for it, which is a good thing, right? I mean, I think we all do with this, being fiscally responsible. So it's hard to be fiscally responsible when you don't know where your money's going to come from or how much. So, thank you.
All righty, Chris. Student achievement.
As we go back to our February Student of the Month, which was Mr. Archer Dean from Maddox Lane, we also have other voting representatives that include Ballard Primary School, which was Hazel Henry Williams. Bear Primary School, Charlotte McAlwin. Jane Chance Intermediate School, Catherine Antunes Flores. Kinder Intermediate School, Iris Knox. Mark Twain Primary School, Avery Vector. Medlarview Primary School, Amora Habushi Thomas. Mount Intermediate School, Ben Patton. Myersburg Middle School, Parker Bauer. And Myersburg High School, Riley Zaring. So congratulations to all the Students of the Month and especially Mr. Dean from Maddox Lane.
Thank you, Chris. On to Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition.
Yes, we had a meeting today and I just have a few things to share. On April 24th, the Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition will be sponsoring a comedy show with proceeds to benefit the Good Shepherd Ministries and the MCDFC. Tickets are available at Eventbrite for $25 each and it's going to be held at Sinclair Community College with free parking. So that's a great event. They had it last year, they, it was a very successful fundraiser. We also had a presentation from Marla Holloway. She's the CEO of the Dayton Recovery Project, a drug rehab organization. It caters to all aspects of recovery and the whole person, including mental and physical health. If you want more information, I specifically asked her if communities that were not Dayton could contact them or participate. They have so many resources. So if you are interested in that, you can go to DaytonRecoveryProject.org. The meetings are held at 907 West Fifth Street. And as I mentioned, this group is open to anyone in the Dayton area. Also, we have a report by the Sheriff's Department. Fatal overdose are down 40% in Montgomery County in 2024, which is very positive. But she also said that overdoses overall have shown an increase in 2025, so very concerning in that way. That ends my report.
Thank you, Nyla. I do not have any district news to present, so we will go on to the board roundtable. And we will start with Molly.
I don't have anything else to say, but I appreciate having you.
Thank you.
I want to start just by saying, you know, growing up in this community, like would all of us have, you know, every once in a while, somebody passes away that had a huge impact in your life. And March 8th, there was a gentleman by the name of Joe Wolf that our community lost. And my family's been real close to the Wolf family since I was super young. My mom was a teller with Joe's wife, Joyce, an alliance family in the First National Bank. And kind of the answers knew him well. And he was a great guy, he was an athletics booster, he was always in our stands and he was just a great person and he'll be dearly missed. Moving on beyond that, you know, I think I'm always floored at the amount of donations that we get, whether it be from the Legion, the Eagles, the individuals, the Moose Lodge, the athletics, the amount of support that they give our community, whether it be through our schools, through our athletics programs, is absolutely admirable and very special. Again, thanks to Archer, our Student of the Month. He had some schnazzy shoes and he had more courage than a lot of elementary and other kids do to come up and shake our hand, which was kind of neat. I do want to take a minute and I want to acknowledge our middle school competition cheer team. I'm a homer, my daughter's a part of that, but they again won the, they again won the OHSAA state championship at Wittenburg University in Division One Middle School and were G-Walk champions again. And they have really, really, really set a very high standard that, you know, and, you know, as a dad, when, you know, and it's all started in WeBikes, you know, at Harmon Field. And, you know, so the mentorship that our kids get from the WeBikes program and the involvement that they get in athletics is critically important. So for all the coaches and WeBikes coaches and the parent volunteers and everybody that's involved in all that, I mean, they start with these kids where they were super young and it really has a huge impact on these kids. You know, it's fun to watch, watch them when they're little and it's like herding cats on a football field. It's just absolute man, you just hope they run in the right end zone. And now when they get a little bit older, you know, in seventh and eighth grade, they're actually hitting and getting more competitive and it's neat to see. So that's all I have, thanks.
When I ran for the school board, one of my goals was to improve health and wellness opportunities in the schools. And I recently learned that Montgomery County is one of the high-risk counties for lead contamination and lead exposure for children. So I wanted to share that. Two-thirds of homes in Ohio may have lead paint and 40% of high-risk children don't receive recommended lead tests. Lead increases a child's risk for learning and behavior problems, so parents can check with their child's doctor for testing recommendations. Just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Congratulations to Archer, Student of the Month, and to all the Students of the Month for each school. And I want to echo what Jason said about the donations. It's wonderful to be a part of a community where so many people support our athletics and other extracurricular activities with their donations. Dr. Blessing, Mrs. Dobson, Mrs. Neese and I attended the preschool promise summit on March the 7th at Sinclair Community College. Over 700 attendees networked and attended learning sessions regarding preschool education in our region, state and country. It was very interesting. I want to say a great job to the student board reps on the survey at the primary and intermediate schools. And I am just so pleased with how you have included all of our students from K through 12 in your communication two-way. You've communicated with them and then you've also asked for feedback from them. So thank you again.
Yeah, just kudos to our student board reps. Your presentation was very informative and just keep doing the great work that you're doing. You know, you hear a lot of things about students these days and I just have experienced so many tremendous students in Myersburg and it's so nice to, you know, be around those kind of kids because it's not all negative. It's more positive, it truly is, from the students who I meet. Just wanted to thank Mr. Freeze for being back after basketball season, thanks for recording our meetings. I wanted just to encourage any community member who is concerned about the proposed budget cuts by the state to public schools to write letters to the governor and legislators. I know our area board reps are busy writing letters and our student reps are getting ready to write a letter as well. And if you needed any talking points or addresses, I know that Mrs. Hillard and myself would be willing to help any community member. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a few things I'd like to say, congratulations to Mr. Dean for being the Student of the I want to give a shout out to, I know our counselor, Stacy Molly, that's, I think what M C, Miami Valley Career Technology does for our students, not just Miami'sburg, but in Montgomery County is unbelievable. It's good to know that we have that much interest, and Jason's right, you know, you can't get that, I mean, that education and that advancement that they get coming out of there is just, is just remarkable, and I'm a huge advocate for that particular school system to deceive that we have 70 out of 107 already and a bunch on the way, but I, it's great. We're here as board members for advocates for kids. You know, I learned that very quickly from Dale Toadvine, and I carry that with me every day. And with that being said, I think what you four have done, not only for the high school, but for the younger kids in all of our grades and getting out and doing the things that you do, I think is, I commend you for doing it. I will tell you to the two young ladies at the end, you have two months left. Don't blink your eye, you're going to miss it more than you think you do. I coached there for 14 years on Friday nights. I miss Friday nights. I don't coach anymore on Friday nights, and I miss that. There's nothing like high school football, there's nothing like college football, but high school football was always, I looked forward through practice for, and it was the kids that were in the stands, as much as it is for the community that was in the stands, and the players and the coaches that were on the field. So whatever you're doing this spring, don't blink your eye, all right? I know Sophia runs, I see her all the time, you know, and she's got another year left, but, but I think you got to do a remarkable job, and I commend you guys for everything that you guys do, and I look forward to see what you guys do in the future. So with that being said, I'll move on to the student training.
I don't have a whole lot to say except for thank you, but also just want to give a quick update on the audit, it's been certified and submitted, so it remains confidential until I get the release from the Auditor of State to go ahead and discuss that, so that will hopefully be on the next round of the board agenda. Thank you.
All righty, I will also be brief. I hope everybody enjoys a spring break, a much-needed break here, and I will beat the drum of the student reps here. Great presentation, but what I want to say is, today, you know, I really see the confidence of the speaking ability and everything being here, you guys don't seem as nervous and seen tremendous growth, and just thank you, and, you know, I see it, so, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Well, kudos to all of our exciting things tonight. Of course, Archer, that was so fun, and I know that Melissa Wurst does a lot with our 3D printers, and she made a lot of that cool stuff on the table, and she'll love seeing the picture with him enjoying that, because that's a passion of hers, but also a skill she has that we get to take advantage of. So thank you, Melissa, for, the students enjoyed that tonight. And of course, the donations are fabulous, I do have to give a shout out to Jeff Nestor because he is just pivotal in working with the Eagles and that organization to just bring so many needed funds to our district. So shout out to the Eagles and Jeff Nestor. And then also, student reps, you're going to give us a little more information and your opinion on some things happening right now at the school district and your reports, so I'm excited to hear that. Just a couple of quick things, the 26-27 calendar, parents and students for planning purposes is in the works, right? So we should have that ready for everyone to start making their spring break plans and fall break plans coming up in the next month or so. Kindergarten registration is actively happening. Mrs. Dobson, we've actually fulfilled all of our preschool slots, correct?
I think we have eight slots remaining at one school, but otherwise, all of our preschool slots are closed.
So eight more preschool slots, if anyone is interested, I know, I see some feedback on Facebook, but definitely have a vacancy sign for all of our kindergarten students and families, so please schedule your appointment to come in and get registered. Over 200 students registered so far, correct? Very exciting, these are high numbers for this time of year, so it's exciting to see that grow. And then also, I guess I was just going to wish everyone a wonderful and safe spring break as well, and looking forward to warmer weather. Thank you.
So, real quick, we are now officially into the last quarter of the school year, we're also in full swing now of coming into spring sports, so I'm going to congratulate all of our winter sports and all the accomplishments they have made, and really by the next boardman, we're going to have several senior nights already for spring, already done. So it's winding down, so good luck to our spring sports out there, and congratulations to our winter sports. And the donations, I really want to say thank you. You know, I'll give you an example, they finished up the lacrosse wall at the baseball field, and that was a donation as well, so many of the things that you see occurring around the district, and we have great partnerships, and so we are very, very grateful for those, and I think that just makes Miami'sburg a great community, so thank you.
I would just like to speak to what we do besides coming to these meetings, like, we made a presentation today with the primary schools, but we do attend other meetings, they happen once a month, and we do them with six or seven surrounding districts, and we call it the Roundtable, and they all have student board reps and their advisors are there. So we, we like pursue House bills and Senate bills within state legislation that might negatively impact public schools. The one question we're doing this time around was House Bill 96. So I pulled this from OhioSchoolBoards.org, so the House School Association's, just 96, the governor's budget proposes freezes the base cost of fiscal year 2022 levels and reduces the guarantee potentially affecting many Ohio school districts, and its impacts on school funding. I read a dedact that said that, I think it was like 14% of the funding could be now translated to vouchers for private school attendees. So, it's $2.4 billion, I think is what it was. So we're currently creating an email to the governor, because we don't see how that's all too fair, that our budgets and funding is going to be cut a little bit for voucher programs. So that's what we're doing with the Roundtable right now. I always like to kind of provide an update, just so everyone can understand what we do with other districts and other student boards.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about a new program at the high school that we have for fourth quarter, and it's called the Berg Behavior Incentive Program. So it operate, whoa, sorry, it operates on a point-based system, and it's basically a rewards program for our students for this quarter. And it focuses on four main categories, which is attendance, academics, behavior, and then engagement. So for, if you only miss like one day of school, you get three points. There's different levels for each one, so like level three would be only missing one day of school this quarter, and then level two would be like missing two days, level three, no, level one would be missing one, three days. Oh my goodness, that really excused me. But basically, this happens with each category, so say for academics, if you have a 3.8 GPA or above, you get a level three, and then it just goes down, and the lowest one is like a 1.8 to 2.79 GPA, that would be like a level one. And then behavior for level three, it's like no detentions, and then level one would be two or more, or just two. And then for engagement, a level three would be you attend five or more school events, and then level two is you attend three to four school events, then level one, you would attend one to two school events. And each of these levels basically give you a lot of points, and at the end, they're all added up at the end of the quarter, and if you get a level three in all areas, which means you were A-plus this quarter, then you would get the rewards, that would be two semester exemptions from our exams, and then you would get a dollar off of the biking cafe we have in our commons in the morning, you would get entered into a drawing, and then you'd also get ice cream. So it's kind of reward systems like that, and I personally, I like this new thing, especially since you're able to exempt some of your exams, because I knew, we used to do that before COVID or a couple of years before, but I'm glad they're bringing it, bringing it back this year. The only thing that I'm a little worried about is the attendance, because it counts as excused and unexcused, so if you have a doctor's appointment, that still would be counted. The only thing that wouldn't be counted is like a school field trip, but I think that for one day being absent, and like, I think that'd be a little challenging, only because a lot of people have been sick this year, I'm sure, we all know the flu's been going around, and just with appointments, I think that would be challenging. But overall, I think this is a positive program for me, and I, hopefully I can get all three, all points I can, so I can get two exemptions. But that's all I have, just wanted to let you guys know.
Yeah, I definitely think the student incentive program is a positive thing. I know that they're piloting it fourth quarter, so like, it doesn't impact the seniors all that much, but looking forward, I definitely see the mission behind it, we're trying to get our students more involved, and higher attendance rates is definitely a big thing for the high school, so I think it will have positive impacts looking forward. And I also need a quick side note to shout out the biking cafe, I think it's a really cool thing. So our M H department has set up a little coffee shop in the commons, I've helped out there a few times, it's just a really great way for those students to interact with the rest of our student body, get out there, show their faces, help out, like, have something tangible to do. It's really cool, like, they have pretty good coffee, they have like a bunch of cream or flavors, like, I was talking to Ms. Abner about it, I thought that was really cool, like, how many things they have going for them. It runs like a full coffee stand, so I'm happy that that's involved as a part of the student incentive program.
And just kind of wrap us, to wrap us up here, the four of us, as well as Ms. Nice, Ms. Gettler, and Dr. Blessing, we have been conducting interviews for two new student board reps who will take a associate night spot when we graduate. I don't know how we're only going to be able to pick two, but I'm very excited for the students to come and to take on this role and to see what they bring. But one of the main reasons I love this position is to be able to share about things that are happening at our school, like the student incentive program, and being able to hear different perspectives about it, because I, I definitely, it is definitely a positive thing, and I can see the reason why we have implemented it, but I do see some issues coming up with it, so just being able to voice that, voice not only my opinion, but other students' opinions, who I've talked to, to hopefully try to help resolve those issues. But I just want to say thank you again for allowing us to share our presentation, and I hope everyone has a great spring break.
Thanks. Everybody, since I have the mic last, I'm going to just, my, sorry. I have a freshman, he's super excited about the program. He, we talked about it on Tuesday or Wednesday night at the dinner table, and we are going to go on spring break, and we are going to, you know, leave on Thursday, I'm like, well, do you want to miss your day on Thursday or not? So he still wants to go in time, so. And then I went to the basketball banquet, and I just want to give a shout out to the three seniors, they get a chance to present, and kind of a softie, get a little teared up, but them guys did a, did a great job thanking their parents or coaches, and I think it's all, it's great to see young, young men, you know, be able to speak in front of a decent-sized crowd, and it takes, takes some courage to do that, they did, they did a great job. So with that, I would like to call the media on the phone. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. First by Chris, second by Angie, roll call.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.
Ms. Gettler?
Yes.
Ms. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Dackler?
Yes.